So we are now live. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, cool. Okay, with that, I would, could we have a attendance?
Sure. Director Bragman.
Here.
Director Gibson.
Here.
And Chair Russell.
Here. Okay, I need an emotion to adopt the agenda.
Move approval to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Okay, Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Gibson.
Hi.
And Chair Russell.
Hi. And do we have any public comment on it? Items not on the agenda?
Let me see. I don't see any hands raised, so no.
Okay, thank you. Then with that, let's get right.
Can you hear me done?
Yeah, you faded out there for a second.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Yeah, I was asking if you'd. It started.
Good morning, everyone. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
I'm clear. Yeah, my name's Don Seymour, and thank you for inviting me today.
Thank you for providing an update on Russian River water supply conditions as it definitely affects water supply for both you guys and North Marin and Sonoma County.
I'm a principal engineer at Sonoma Water. I oversee our resource and planning section. That group is involved in all the long-term water supply planning, hydrologic modeling of the Russian River system, reservoir operations modeling, and oversee the Sonoma Waters, water rights, manages our water rights program. So with that, I'd be happy to start the presentation, Terry, if you want to bring it up.
I will do that. Share screen. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, unfortunately, this update isn't very good news, and it's not going to be a surprise to you because the conditions in the Russian River watershed are pretty similar to what you guys are experiencing in your watershed. You know, this has been extremely dry two-year period for 2020, 2021. As a matter of fact, kind of to put it in perspective, we're currently, at least in the Russian River watershed, about five to six inches behind the rainfall that was received in the cumulative rainfall that was received in 1976, 77. So without, you know, some significant rain in the next few months, we're actually going to be, you know, the 2020, 2021 is going to be like the historic drought of recent record. So that's the situation we're facing. So this figure shows storage hydrographs for Lake Mendocino from 2014 to where we are in 2021 right now. That dashed black line is actually the rule curve for Lake Mendocino. Anything above that dashed line is the flood control pool, and anything below is the water conservation pool. So that, and the solid black line is storage as of Monday. And as you can see, we're well behind where we were in 2014, which was really kind of an historic drought in the last couple decades. As a matter of fact, if you go, can you go to the next slide, Terry?
Sure.
So this is just a histogram showing stored, you know, the, you know, least amount of storage for this time of year to the maximum amount of storage since the Lake Mendocino was constructed. And for this time of year, we're at the lowest storage level Lake Mendocino's faced since it's filled. So we're, Sonoma Water is really facing some very challenging months ahead to manage flows in the system. And as I'll discuss later, we've already made, worked with the state boards to make some changes, but it's likely not going to be enough. And when we get to this slide, we can, I can talk about it a bit more. Next slide, Terry. The news for Lake Sonoma is, again, we're at lowest storage level since Lake Sonoma filled, about 25,000 acre feet below where we were in 2014. I mean, on the flip side, the good news is it's still a lot of water, you know, 100, almost 155,000 acre feet. But again, just like Lake Mendocino for this time of year, if you go to the next slide, Terry. We're at the lowest level at this time of year since Lake Sonoma was, or Khyri, or Warm Spring Dam was constructed and Lake, Lake Sonoma filled. The really challenging situation for managing the Russian River this year. Next slide. You know, we were seeing these conditions back in December and January, or December getting very concerned at that time, particularly with Lake Mendocino storage. So in January, Sonoma Water filed the temporary change petition with the state board to change how the water, the water years classified. Because I'm not sure if you're probably familiar, but the water year classification and the associated minimum stream flow requirements are actually based on cumulative inflow into Lake Pillsbury, which is part of the Potter Valley project, and not on a metric in the Russian River watershed. And the, on January 1, the water year, that the very first assessment of the water year classification is made. And even though we were in these incredibly dry conditions, that assessment has the highest minimum stream flow requirements. So at that time, we filed a temporary change petition, move the, how the water year is classified from cumulative inflow to at Lake Pillsbury to storage-based thresholds at Lake Mendocino. We didn't request changes to the Lower Russian River and releases from Lake Sonoma because at the time, it really wouldn't have, it changed how we were managing operations of Lake Sonoma for water supply. We did, when we filed that, that temporary change petition, did inform the state board that, you know, that could change if water supply condition at Lake Sonoma didn't improve. They haven't improved, and, you know, we are actually contemplating potentially filing another temporary change petition to change flows on the Lower Russian River. Because right now, they're in what's the water year classification that's dry condition, and really to be in alignment with where we are in the Russian River, it should be critical with, you know, a much lower minimum stream flow requirement as we go into summer. Next slide. So this, you know, 2014 is a nice comparison. For a while, it seemed like we were tracking a bit with 2014. Unfortunately, we're dropping well behind. This is cumulative precipitation for a rain gauge just outside of Ukiah. It's kind of a nice metric for, you know, the Lake Mendocino watershed. So this is showing where we are to date. And then this is the next slide, shows the seven-day forecast. So, you know, we see 2014 getting well ahead of us with no precipitation forecasted out, or at least the next 14 to 21 days. Next slide, please. And this just shows a similar cumulative precipitation for a rain gauge outside of, just near Healdsburg, kind of a metric for rainfall that Lake Sonoma is receiving, again, well below 2014. 2014 is that blue line. Green line is 20, is 2021. Seven-day forecast again. Next slide, please. Is seeing no rainfall yet, 2014 moving, moving ahead. Next slide. So this is the six to 10-day forecast that's put out by the Climate Prediction Center. And what it's showing here is that dark brown is, means that we're 50% probability of receiving below normal rainfall for the next six to 10 days. So not, not encouraging news. Next slide, please. And this is a climate forecast for the next 30 days. There's not a tremendous amount of skill in these forecasts, but what it's showing is you can see the Bay Area, and then in that, that light, very light blue, it's, you know, over the next 30 days, it's only forecasting a potential for 0.7 inches of rain, so well below an inch of rain going well into April. So these are extremely concerning, you know, climate forecasts, hydrologic conditions. And again, I know you guys are facing these same, these same concerning, you know, very concerning situation in your own watershed. I would mention, there is a potentially a bit of good news. We, we work really closely with Scripps Institute on our forecast-informed weather for reservoir operations initiatives at Lake Mendocino. And they are 14 days out. They are seeing a slight potential for an atmospheric river in our region. So that would be, you know, any precipitation, something, you know, along an atmospheric river would be really welcome news. Unfortunately, that 14-day forecast doesn't have a tremendous amount of skill, so we'll just have to see how things kind of shore up over, you know, the next week or so and keep our eyes out. So that kind of sums up where we are, and I'd be happy to, you know, answer any questions I think that you might have on, you know, what this means going forward, coming into the summer and trying to manage the system.
Don, could you touch on, this has been, what it could mean for MMWD and when those actions may take, you know, when they could occur and why, what would be the triggers?
So there, yeah, that's a great question, Ben. And there's a couple, there's a couple triggers that could occur. So number one is in Sonoma Water's water right permit for storage in the Lake Sonoma and redivation of stored water at Lake Sonoma. There's a term that if Lake Sonoma drops below 100,000 acre feet before July 15th, that's not going to happen this year. This would only occur if, you know, we continue this really dry conditions and go into 2022. It has a mandatory requirement to reduce our diversions by 30% compared to the same time in the previous year. So that potentially is an impact, well, you know, well out into the future, 2022. We are looking at those forecasts, and, you know, we really, you know, we don't know the future hydrology. So we do have a very long hydrologic record that we've developed for the Russian River. It goes from 2009 to 2017, 108 years of hydrologic record that we can use as, you know, that, see, you know, you know, it is looking in the past. We don't have climate futures that we, on a granular level, we could use for this. But using that variable, you know, hydrology of the past, there are a number of years, you know, hydrologic years that by January 2022, Lake Sonoma could drop below that 100,000 acre foot mark. So that would be a trigger that would impact MMWD and all the water contractors.
Are there any other triggers, Don?
There would be. So the other trigger would be, you know, filing a temporary change petition to preserve storage in Lake Sonoma. I don't think the state board would be amendable to just reducing minimum stream flows. I think if we were to request reducing flows to preserve, preserve storage, they want to see some type of reduction in diversion. That Sonoma Water, working with Marin Municipal and the other water contractors, would want to coordinate one. It's, it's better to, it would be better to, you know, propose something than let the state board in their own vacuum come to their own decisions.
Seems to me, Don, that, I don't recall that part of the discussion at the WAC meeting about the 100,000 acre feet. I think you probably should be bringing that back to the WAC, at least at some point in the future. What, and I know it's impossible, but with your crystal ball, what do you think's going to happen here? Are we in a new normal, or is this just a typical drought cycle, or is this climate warming? I mean, if you look at that picture, the one with the brown, the map of the United States with the brown area, I mean, it's almost a map of the high pressure zones, you know, the high atmospheric pressure. It's pretty close to it, and you can see the impact it's having. Where that high is, everybody's predicted to be below average rainfall in the next month or whatever time period it was.
You know, it's really hard to say. These type, you know, when we look at some of the historic droughts, you know, through like tree, tree ring research, you know, past, these very dry periods, you know, we do know that the last 150 years has been a wetter period than, than, you know, historical climate. It, and, and, and we know from, you know, the research in, in, in climate change that we're going to see more variability, drier, drier drought, you know, more droughts, but also more variable rainfall where we get, you know, flood cut, you know, very condensed periods of high rainfall. So I think maybe we're starting to see some of that variability. I mean, within, you know, six years, we've seen two historic droughts. That's, that's concerning. And, and then on top of it all, we were managing a system where we're receiving a lot less water from the Potter Valley project. You know, a system that, that developed around that water, your water rights that were issued to the, to Russian River water users, you know, minimum stream flow requirements that were in the Russian River that were developed around that water that was being transferred, and there's been significant for that transfer. So it's, we're going to be, you know, have a lot of challenges going into the future.
Well, as Mark Twain said, waters for fighting and whiskeys for drinking, huh?
Very, very much so.
Don, you mentioned Potter Valley. Is there, do these, the situation you're describing, does that, is that a game changer for Potter Valley? Is that back to the drawing board for Potter Valley, or is that just off the table?
Well, I think for one thing, it shows Russian River water users how important that, you know, that transfer is and getting them engaged in the process that's going on currently for that, by the NOI parties for trying to obtain a new license to the project, the two-basin solution that's going on. I, you know, I think, you know, even if the, if the parties are successful in obtaining a new license, I think they'll, they'll, they'll still be, they'll, it'll, there'll be reduced reliability of project water coming, of it transferring Eel River water into the Russian River system. So I think it's going to be just as important, you know, to continue to develop projects in the Russian River watershed that, that build reliability, and, you know, kind of going into the 20, you know, 21st century.
Do you guys follow the Eel River watershed?
Really closely with respect to the, to the project, Chair Russell, but not so much once, you know, below the Cape Horn Dam.
Okay.
So, Don, when you mentioned petitioning the state board to change the Lower Russian River, so you'd be petitioning them to change how they classify years as dry or not dry?
No, so for, so when we, so when we filed that, that temporary change petition back in January, it's really challenging because, you know, we don't have that crystal ball to know what the hydrology is going to look like, you know, still in the winter months. Coming, you know, at, right now, we're starting to kind of firm up where we are with water supply and where the hydrology is going. We know we have, you know, by May, we pretty much have all our rainfall. So it would be more likely that we would just file for a lower minimum stream flow requirement, not for how we determine the waters, the water year classification.
Okay, okay. But for the upper, for the upper, you're going away from Pillsbury to another metric.
Well, if we file again, we would probably file a petition that would, that would take care of both the upper, and it would, it would, it would kind of supersede the order that's in place right now. Because that order expires in middle, in late July, so we'd have to do something anyway to extend it into, you know, into the fall, early winter, to make sure we were getting through the entire dry season.
Okay, so for, but to go back to the reduction in stream flow on the lower end, is that for habitat?
So, so the stream flow, I'm not sure I understood the question.
Is the stream flow?
For the fish.
Is it for the fish?
So the minimum stream flows are based on, you know, both for, you know, ecological purposes, so fish and habitat, you know, recreation, water supply. So if you have a normal water supply condition, it has a much higher minimum stream flow requirement because there's more water available. And you're trying to, we're trying to meet flows that are more optimum for all the beneficial uses. As, as you get into drier water supply conditions, you have less water available, it lowers those minimum stream flow requirements. So we would be requesting minimum stream flows much below what would be, you know, optimal for recreation, habitat. Fortunately, at that time of year, there's, especially in the lower river, there, there's not like steelhead, juvenile steelhead and salmon, they're, they're, they're up in the tribes and in other parts of the river. So it's of less concern. I think for the lower river, the biggest concern of reducing those minimum stream flow requirements is going to be its impact on recreation. That's really an important economic engine for that area. There's going to be a lot of, there'll be concerns for, for also water quality, you know, potential out of booms. But unfortunately, the water's just not there, and the consequence of, of meaning of flow that really the reservoir can't support is we're risking the water supply for 600,000 people.
Yeah.
Do you think, Don, they, they've knocked down the sandbar at the end of the river to avoid some of that?
Well, that, well, that sandbar does, has formed many times this, this winter, Chair Russell. And we, we only breach that sandbar when it, there's a risk of flooding down in the, down in the estuary.
I see, I see. So you wouldn't use it for water supply?
No.
Let it come back.
Yeah, it's brackish water back there. It's.
Of course, of course.
So, Don, just for clarification for the board, you indicated the 100,000 trigger where we could reduce, be reduced, could happen based on the historical record, potentially as soon as January. And then you indicated there could be a reduction that accompanies a change petition, like in the Lower Russian River, Dry Creek, or both, and that could happen when? In July?
I, it potentially, I think that would, that's a conversation that we're working on with the TAC leadership. And, and, and also discussing internally at Sonoma Water what that would look like. We just, we haven't formulated that quite yet. But we would certainly be, be bringing that to, you know, the TAC leadership to share with the contractors and Marin Municipal, we're closer to having a plan. It's, 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 these temper, I just have to say, filing temporary change petitions is is really resource-intensive, both on, you know, providing the information necessary for the state board to make those decisions. But as you can imagine, there's a lot of folks that really don't want those changes, even though they're really necessary to preserve the system. So, you know, a lot of complaint letters from different CEOs that the state board has to take seriously and address in any type of order that they issue. We also have to work really closely with the resource agencies for their support, and those resource agencies have conditioning authority. So what we end up with is an order that approves what we requested, but with a lot of terms and conditions that we need to meet during the term of that order. And monitoring terms, reporting terms, and they, both from, you know, the, the cost and the use of Sonoma Water staff time are really tax, taxes. And so we really want, when we come in, when we file these, we really want to go in with deliberating on them and going in with the best package we can with the least amount of impact to Sonoma Water and its contractors.
The state board?
Go ahead, go ahead. I'm always kind of including Marin Municipal in there, that you're, you're one of our larger water contracts, water supply.
We appreciate that. How long does it take the state board to respond to these? Is it timely, or do they take their time and get to it when they can?
Well, unfortunately, you know, the COVID-19 shelter in place, you know, challenging. They responded to our last, the January petition in about a month. So generally, you know, if, if, you know, we're in close communication with them, we give them a lots of heads up. It generally takes about four to six weeks. So potentially, if we filed something in, in May, we could have an order in mid-June sometime. So.
And that's about. Does it require the governor's approval, or is it just the state board?
Yes, the state board.
That's good. Could you also re-explain your picture, your background, just so everybody knows what that is?
Yeah, so this is the Russian River outs, just kind of outside Forestville. And this is what we refer to as Wooler, our Wooler diversion facility. These are in the background are, they're very large radio collector wells. We, they're called Collector 1 and 2 because they were our first two collector wells. They were completed, construction was completed in 1959. They came online and started supplying water. So what you see is the, the motor house is on top of a very large diameter concrete caisson. That concrete caisson is 14 feet, and the inside diameter of that caisson is 14 feet and extends about, you see about 20 or 30 feet of it sticking up out of the, you know, up in the air. But it penetrates that alluvial aquifer about 80 or 90 feet down. And at the bottom of that caisson are perforated laterals that extend out into that, the alluvial aquifer. Each one of those has seven laterals. There are 12, 12 inches in diameter. The, the original methodology was they would, they would drive mild steel that has slots in it, that they would use that as the drill pipe, and basically pound them out into that, the alluvial aquifer until there was too much pressure, you know, they couldn't be pushed out any further. So the, they range in length from anywhere from 80 feet long to 170 feet long. And wat, water that, the water that's in that alluvial system that's infiltrating from the Russian River enters those laterals. All the treatment that, that's received is from those alluvial materials. There's no additional treatment that, after it goes into those wells. And other than chlorination and raising the pH of it, and then it's pumped directly into the aqueducts to serve, serve our, you know, our customers. So very unique system. If you ever have a chance, when the shelter in place is, is eventually lifted, if you ever have a chance to come to our facilities, it's, it's, it's a really interesting system. It's very unique. It's referred to as riverbank filtration. It's done all over the world. It really, it was first popped up in, in Europe, where they were, you know, industrialization started really polluting their river systems. And so they started putting wells adjacent to the river, so they would start getting treatment, you know, some groundwater treatment before, instead of just taking, doing intakes out of, out of their river systems. The, the unique part is most of those systems now are, you know, they, they, they use the riverbank filtration as a pre-treatment to, you know, get a more stable water quality. And then it goes to a conventional water treatment plant, whereas here, the, the alluvial system is providing all that natural filtration, natural processes that's producing a very high-quality water. And so quite unique, and it's, it's, it's the largest system of its kind that produces water like this. So that's very, very interesting system, and would, would be happy to, you know, it's like I said, when, when the shelter in place would be happy to have a, have a field trip out there with folks who are interested from, from Marin Municipal.
That would be great. Thank you.
Do you guys have any groundwater resources that you could draw on if, you know, you go under 100,000 next year?
We do. We have three groundwater wells that are, that are located in the Santa Rosa Plain. They're capable of about 6 million gallons a day. And that could be potentially something we would bring online to supplement water product, water supply production. Also working with the contractors who have low, you know, local resources too, that, that maybe could be brought online to off, you know, offset any type of reduction in what's available from Sonoma Water.
Something.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm sure I'm singing to the choir on, you know, how, how really kind of concerning the water supply conditions are. You know, I know you guys are facing similar situation with reservoir levels being below, well below normal for, for, for this time of year. And, you know, we're really running out of, out of wet months that can make a significant impact to the changes in storage right now. Thank you.
Yeah, those February rainfalls were interesting on those graphs you showed. I mean, those were pretty healthy. I didn't realize it had rained that much. You had two good shots in February in the Healdsburg Gage.
We did, but, you know, we, we just never saw any type of significant improvement in storage. They just, the watershed pretty much just.
Ate it. Yeah, ate it. That's the same problem we're having. You know, even a rainfall like two inches doesn't really generate runoff. Ate it. Yeah, ate it. That's the same problem we're having. You know, even a rainfall like two inches doesn't really generate runoff significantly. You know, it's, you gotta get to six or something like that to satisfy the, the watershed.
Well, and we were coming in from a very dry last, dry year last year and then on, on top of, and now, you know, we're, you know, everything's starting to break, getting bread, bud break. And so that's gonna, you know, that riparian gap of transpiration is gonna really start kicking in. So in rain, that is, it's gonna have less impact also.
Well, you know, one of the funny things, Don, about the MMWD is that back at the time of its formation, one of the proposals was to cut all the trees down in order to keep them from stealing our water. That was a legitimate proposal made by somebody in the water district.
Well, so it, probably not a great idea, but interestingly, we've had some of these very, very significant wildfires. And one thing we've noticed after Walbridge Fire and the Tubbs Fire, streams that were dry, when, when you get this big, you know, fire going through and killing a lot of trees, there's a, a big bump up in the, in the water table and you see these streams start running again because the trees are no longer taking up that water.
Yeah, that's interesting. Yeah.
I, I don't think we'll try that approach.
No, it's not good for fisheries and, and a lot of other in wat, water quality benefits, but
Hard on houses too.
So are the applications you guys are going to be filing, are those public documents?
Yes, once they're filed, they're a public document.
Could we, could you share those with our staff so we could take a look at them?
Well, so the ones that have, so actually, I just got an email from Pam Jean, our Assistant General Manager, that Mike Vaughn had reached out to her. I, I understand that you guys are considering filing a temporary change petition and we're, we, I, I think we're going to be scheduling a call next week on, he was looking for some, some information and advice, because I'll, I'll just have to admit, I have quite a reputation at the state board. I, I think I've, I've filed more temporary change petitions than a, a, any others, you know, agency they've worked with. So that, we, we and, and I've been responsible for filing those with Sonoma Water since, since we've been doing it. So they hear my name, they kind of like, you know, get a little nervous because they know.
Well, we love having a desperado on our team, I can tell you that much.
Director Russell, can I see if there are any public comments at this time?
Of course.
All right, if you, I have Mr. Frank Edger.
Edgar.
Edgar, thank you, sir.
How are you?
Great, great.
Good, good.
Thank, thank you, yeah. Very timely conversation. You know, just as a matter of, 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 of backup information, as a coastal commissioner in the 1970s, I tried to stop Warm Springs Dam from being built because of the impact on Salmanas and, and coast beaches, you know, loss of sand transport to replenish our beaches. But that, just, just, just for a little background. But currently, the state's Rena housing requirements for, for the next eight years for Sonoma County is 17,500 new units and for Marin County, it's 14,000 new units. How can, how can Sonoma and Marin Water continue to allow new hookups as a well is about to run dry? Is it time perhaps for discussion about a, a water moratorium, a, a hookup, hookup moratorium? Just a question.
Yeah, so, you know, I understand. So what, one thing I would just point out is there, there's been just in our region, both Marin and, and Sonoma County through the Sonoma Marin Saving Water Partnership, which is a coalition of, you know, contractors and our Sonoma Waters, water contractors and Marin Municipal. Them working together over the past decade is just a significant reduction, you know, not, not, not reaction to a drought, but just change in habits on how water is used. And, you know, the per capita use in our region is extremely low. And then on top of that, the state is, is putting so much regulation on, you know, on new construction on, that, that requires plumbing codes, landscape codes that are really reducing the, you know, capital use of water. And so I think through those savings, we, we're making that water available for, you know, that, that we're seeing.
Thank you. Let me see, let me see if Mr. Roberts has. Mr. Roberts?
No comment.
No comment. Okay, all right, we're good. No further comments.
Okay, the only other thing I want to do is encourage everybody to do our rain dances. Yeah, I see you guys up in Sonoma.
I, I, I was trying to wa, you know, you know, go out and do a fake wash my car, just thinking something would
You probably could get shot for that. Be careful.
That'll, that should work though. Yeah. Yeah, well, it's, it's, it is really timely to, to hear this because it's just such an important partnership for Marin. So I really appreciate it.
And Larry, I'll, I'll tell you, the reason I, I wanted it is my jaw dropped when Don made this presentation to the WAC. You know, I mean, we all know it's there. You know, but it, it's, it's like earthquakes. It's, it's in your head, you know the probabilities there. But, and, and like Jack and I were talking the other day, that an earthquake is a relatively rare event, like once in 100 years or something like that, a big one. But this drought is a recurring interval of, you know, 10, 5, 12, 20 years or something like that that we really need to integrate. And Cynthia and I were talking yesterday about this. You know, we really have to cut the grass growing issue in the bud because it's an old English tradition that's carried over. And it, it's just stupid, you know, you, you go to Greece or you go to Italy, they don't have grass. You know, Mediterranean climates don't have grass. Egypt doesn't have grass. You know, it's just this crazy thing where we try to shove a wet environment into a dry environment. The wet growing conditions, this doesn't work. So we're gonna have to face the reality here pretty soon.
Yeah.
Um, Chair Russell, go ahead.
Yes. But.
Oh, I was, I'm sorry, I interrupted. Director Bragman, I'm sorry, sorry, go ahead if you wanted to speak.
No, I mean, I, I agree, the aesthetics need to conform to our environment. So, you know, it's important.
You know, Larry, it's just like the sisters you were talking about, you know, I, I like the name Sistern better than gray water. I mean, because it's, you know, a, a Sistern implies drinking water, which is what you mentioned in Australia, which you can do, you know, you can segregate these things to make them collect the rain and be able to use them for more portable water sources, let's put it that way. Not, maybe not legally, but in the sense of water quality treatment, but at least in terms of reclaiming it as opposed to gray water. But I'm, I think it's time, you know, we need to recognize that this is the reality of our, our latitude and we just have to face, face it.
Yeah.
Director Russell.
Just one thing I was, I'd like to point out, and I, I know, I know Ben is, is aware of this, but Sonoma Water, working with the contractors, has, has been working on a water supply resiliency plan. This is working with Jacobs Engineering. They developed the work plan. And now we're completing that work plan. It's to develop an actual model of not just Sonoma Water system, but also of all the water, you know, contractors and Marin Municipal and be able to, you know, actually look at, at, at projects in the future and management options in the future that can improve water supply resiliency in face of drought or seismic activity that may, you know, damage the trans, you know, our systems and how we can build more resiliency in that through, through, through all working together and kind of looking beyond those jurisdictional boundaries, even though we're, we're, you know, we, we are interconnected through both transmission system, our, you know, Sonoma Water's transmission system. And then also, you know, North Marin and Marin through their, you know, partially through the, their transmission, their distribution system. So that project is, is moving along right now and will be completing the first, this next phase of it, which is actually building the model and moving on to scenario development and running the scenarios and then looking for potential projects over the next 12 to 18 months.
Thank you for bringing up that, that issue. That's a very important one. When is the project supposed to be complete? Do you have any idea?
We, we, we should be wrapping it up by January, February of 2022.
Twenty-two, so pretty close. And obviously, it's, it's one of those things that's a, a living document. It's never going to be finished, I don't think, but at least it's going to be finished as far as the report this phase goes.
Exactly. We, we look at it as, so phase two is, phase one was developing the roadmap. Phase two is actually implementing the roadmap and developing the modeling platform and, and and then phase three will be on a regular basis revisiting the, that, that model and, and, and where we see potential challenges in, in meeting water supply reliability and running those scenarios on, on a fairly regular basis with, 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 with the water contractors and MMWD. So yeah, exactly, it's living.
I, I presume we're gonna start looking at towing icebergs pretty soon if there's any icebergs left.
Well, I think you'll appreciate this one, Chair Russell. So a humble water district up in
Yeah, yeah, marijuana growers, yeah, we know.
So they're up in the Mad River. They actually operate radio collector wells too, but a lot of their water to the pulp, the pulp industry, which is gone now.
Gone, yeah.
They, they, they were looking into how to deal with putting their water rights to use and not losing some of their water rights. So they, they were looking at one, one of the options was these, these giant bags. They were gonna fill with water from the Mad River and then tow them down the coast and sell the water. So
Yep.
Raw water, you know, about $5,000 an acre foot.
Yep, yep. Well, you know, like I say, it goes back to Mark Twain, huh? It, it's interesting how Mark Twain is almost 200 years ago, 150 years ago, and it, it's the same issues we're talking about today, right? Even with all the infrastructure we put in, we're still living paycheck to paycheck in the water supply business.
Never enough.
Yeah.
Don, I wanted to thank you for taking the time and also for your ongoing support and collaboration with us. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, and we really look forward to working with you on this and especially discussing the issues like this infamous name that you have. Maybe we'll put your name on the front of our petition if we go forward with it, just to get that effect.
Yeah.
In addition to requesting your input, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that conversation next week with Mike Vaughn and we'd be, we're, we're happy to share our, any insight that we have on, on filing these.
Yeah.
Thanks. Maybe you guys can fire up your lobbyists in Sacramento and get them cranking on that too, huh?
We'll try to do that.
Thank you very much for taking the time, Don. And it was even better presentation than the first one.
Thank you, Chair Russell. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Thanks very much, yeah.
Okay, so ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Director Bragman.
Aye.
Director Gibson.
Aye.
Director Kohler.
Aye.
And Chair Russell.
Aye. Okay, now we have an informational item. And Crystal, you're on.
Sure, thank you. Good morning. Crystal Yezman, Director of System Maintenance and Natural Resources. Periodically, we come to the board with an update on our grants, awards and applications, as well as ongoing current legislation that's being debated at the state level and federal levels and how that ties into the district. So I'm gonna pass it over to Matt Segues. He's our grant program coordinator and he'll give you a presentation. Go ahead, Matt.
Great, can you see that okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Good morning, board members. This is Matt Segues, the Grant and Legislative Program Coordinator for the District. Sorry, one second. This morning, I'm gonna give you a brief overview on our grant status and an update on state and federal legislation. So in terms of grant efforts, in early 2020, the district targeted funding for Azalea Hill Project as well as the Loganius Creek Enhancement Project's second phase. The awarded Azalea Hill Project marks the district's largest trail grant ever received. The request for funding on the Loganius Creek Phase Two project was denied by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. However, staff intends to resubmit this request once the current Loganius Creek Enhancement Project has moved closer to completion. The district also
I'm sorry to interrupt, Matt. Do we, when, for all these denies, did they give us, do we know why? And if so, could you just let us know or did they, did they provide that kind of information?
I mean, in certain cases, they do. In, in the case of the Department of Fish and Wildlife, they wanted to see a little more progress on the current enhancement project, getting it to closer to 30% designs before they awarded any more money.
Right, we're gonna be breaking. So if you recall, we did get a grant for the planning and design and we're in that process right now for Phase Two of Loganius Creek Projects. So once that gets a little more solidified, then we'll return for funding for the actual construction.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
And then could I ask a question, Matt, on Azalea Hill? Is, is, are those funds dedicated for any purpose or is it just general, you know, continuing work on, on the trail?
It's for what we call Phase Two of the project. So right now, we're working under a CCMB grant for Phase One. And then once the, the NEPA documentation is completed with the state, we will bring that grant to you for acceptance of the award and that will fund the Liberty Gulch Phase that connects to Belinas Fairfax Road.
Oh.
Yeah, a big part of that award on the 700,000 is a very large retaining wall on that steep hillside as the trail goes up to Belinas Fairfax Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The bridge looks beautiful. That was put in over there. It's very
Yeah, and that, that, that bridge was funded in part by the EMIC Trust for $75,000.
Very, very nice decision. Thanks a lot.
So, sure. So the district also applied to the California Office of Emergency Services to help fund the emergency diesel generator being installed at the San Dorado Treatment Plant. This request was denied and Director Kohler, per your request, we've not received a lot of details on why that was denied at this point. However, the district's project to study potential use of energy recovery turbines in our water system, which is a joint effort with UC Davis, was funded by the American Public Power Association. In the summer of 2020, the district request to the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection to reduce fuels and restore forest health on the watershed was denied. However, staff was recently contacted by CAL FIRE and we were asked to resubmit our forest health application for a potential direct award. This $3.2 million proposal, which we're submitting in partnership with Parks Conservancy and Marin County Parks, is expected to reach decision point soon.
That's great.
And just to point out, that'll mark the largest grant award we've ever received, if it is awarded.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Is that 3.2, our piece of it, or is that the total among the three parties?
That's the, the total among the three parties. Our piece would be 2.9 million and the other, the other part would be, would be split by the county and Parks Conservancy.
Wow, fingers crossed, guys.
Yeah. Additionally, the district was denied in its request for funding by the US Department of Treasury for rate pair relief. However, we are currently in discussions with the county Marin to, to try to work with them to receive some funding that they received for utility rate pair relief.
So can I just ask about that? Because I was really surprised to see that denied. Is that because the funding all has to go to a municipality? I was worried about that in the CARES Act. There was nothing about special district. It was all cities and counties. Is that the issue?
That's, that's exactly the issue. As a special district, we are not eligible for direct allocations from the government. And I'm actually mentioning that several times in this, in this presentation, but that's something that we're working on and trying to, to, to get around.
Okay, and it's definitely, if you're, I assume you're in touch with Representative Hoffman-Zoffman, but we've talked to them separately about this. It's just a big blind spot. I don't think anybody's got it out for special districts. It's just that it's just a little bit more unusual that we have so many in the West and in California. So I hope if, man, I don't know who our lobbyist is in DC, but it's something we really need to be talking to them about as, as they go forward. You know, there's a massive infrastructure bill and I'm just worried we're gonna have the same issue there.
Agree.
I mean, they're talking about any billions in this upcoming infrastructure bill and it's something that, you know, we really should be positioned to participate in.
Thank you. So now I'm going to move on to an update of state and federal legislation.
One second, Matt. Cynthia, just remember that there's 155,000 water districts in the United States.
No, I know. Exactly. No, that's, that's, I'm agreeing. I'm just saying that.
No, I know you are. I know you are.
Okay.
It's just there's a, you know, it, it's, it's like everything else that's been happening with this CARE stuff is, it's almost all seems to be reaction instead of planning, you know, that, oh yeah, what about this? Instead of, you know, I mean, just look at the way the shots have been organized. It's typical, right? It's just, oh, now we got the shots. What are we going to do? Same problem.
Right.
So at the state level, we are tracking bills targeting water affordability, regulations on water use, new legislation on water and sewer rates, efforts to address wildfires, and a potential omnibus climate bond for the 2022 ballot. We brought Senate Bills 222 and 223, both authored by Senator Dodd of Napa, to the Finance Committee in January as information. These bonds seek to provide relief for low-income ratepayers, but also to establish new rules on service disconnects and debt forgiveness. The Association of California Water Agencies has come out in opposition, excuse me, to both these bills unless they're amended. Aqua contends that the bills as written would violate Prop 218 rules and would largely be inefficient if administered by the Water Board. The current status of these bills is that in the face of water industry opposition, they've been pulled from committee hearings to be reworked. AB 1434 is a water use bill introduced by Assemblymember Friedman of Mendel. Aqua's position on the bill is that it would establish a new standard for indoor residential water use of 48 gallons per capita daily. By January 1st, 2030, it would further be reduced to 40 gallons per capita daily. Aqua already sees Governor Brown's 2016 order to make conservation a way of life as setting conservation goals in our framework for the state and views this legislation as circumventing the process which sets those goals. Aqua opposes this bill. Senate Bill 323, authored by Senator Ana Caballero, is being sponsored by Aqua as one of their signature bills for the 2021 session. This bill creates a statute of limitations for water and sewer rates. The proposal would require an interested party to bring in action within 120 days after the local agency adopts the fee or charge. Staff sees the potential for the board to adopt a formal support position on this bill.
So when you say creates a statute of limitation for rates, you mean a statute of limitations for challenging rates? Is that what that means?
Correct.
Okay, you might want to clarify that. It's a little, okay. So this is a statute of limitations regarding litigation against water and sewer agencies?
Yes, it is.
That's correct. It would limit challenges to rate setting. Yes.
And how are they, okay, I, I don't want to get too far down the rabbit hole here, but I mean, but if you're asking us to, but we're not deciding on support today, are we? Are we?
No, 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 no.
Okay, great.
Deciding, but Director Kohler, we, we would like feedback if the board would like us to bring it back to establish a formal position.
So what I need is, I think, some analysis from Molly. I think it's a good idea in theory, but I'm, I'm not clear how a statute can. It's, it looks to me like a modification of 218. So to me, the question is, is would this be subject to a constitutional challenge? So I just, I just, I just want to have more legal analysis before we go on record supporting something. That's all.
That's a good question. We can, we can. So I appreciate that, Director Kohler. I think it's, it's, it's an important question and we can definitely have more analysis done. And I think that the thought process is this is procedural so that it doesn't undermine the substantive nature of 218, but certainly that's worth looking closely at.
I just, I just want us to unpack it a little bit before we go on record. Thanks. Yes.
It also seems to me, Ben, that, one thing, Matt, I think this is a really good summary that you're doing here and something that we probably need to do more frequently.
Right.
Just to help the board members stay up to speed. But I, I think, Ben, I, I don't know who's representing us at Aqua. I mean, I don't remember any votes coming past us about whether these should be supported or not. I don't know where they're making these decisions. Is it the Aqua Board or is it their legal council?
My understanding, the Aqua Board makes the decisions on what they sponsor. They do elicit feedback from the members and there's opportunities to sign on. Generally, we are looking to establish what we're doing today as an ongoing frequent update to the board and move into a more formalized approach to get board positions, get MMWD formal positions, oppose support, watch on bills that are significant to us.
That's great. I think we should also push on Aqua to make a little more effort to reach out to the constituency, the water utility agencies, and explain what they're doing or what they're proposing to do. I don't know if they'll push back on that, like they feel it's confidential or something, but I think it would be nice to at least hear from their council as to where they're going and before they do it, so that we don't get blindsided, because I feel blindsided about this. You know, it's hard in these short summaries to understand, but you know, they're objecting to the previous two actions, bills. You know, maybe they're totally sound, but I'd sure like to have a feel for that understanding. We're not a major player in Aqua. I got the picture. It's just, I think it would be helpful to solicit whatever level of support similar to the, the Don Seymour presentation about the water in, in Sonoma. Think of it that same way from Aqua. To, to come to us and even they give us a can, you know, videotape it and, and just send us a, a thing or, or even a written, a letter saying these are our positions and this is why. They may not want to put it in a letter. I don't know. But something like that would be helpful.
Yeah, Director Russell, I think most of that, if not all of that information is available and we can do a better job in a timely way of bringing it to the board as they're thinking about things and making decisions and their analysis that supports what they're thinking or what they're doing. So we'll begin to integrate that as well.
It impresses me. I wasn't aware that water buffaloes did so much thinking.
So, great. So just at a, at a high level in relation to wildfire and climate funding and legislation, SB 45 and AB 1500 are competing bills right now. As we saw with Prop 68 and Prop 1 in the past, they'll likely be merged, creating an omnibus park and water bond that'll go before the voters in 2022. And meanwhile, we're watching as the governor's proposed budget moves towards passage and includes nearly $3 billion for CAL FIRE. In early May, an adjusted budget we presented and then passed by the state legislature in early June. So the bond measure would fund programs from which the district seeks grant funding. Therefore, staff also sees the potential for the board to potentially adopt a formal support position on whichever bill emerges for, for, for a, a final vote.
So, Matt, is there funding for vegetation management in that budget too, you know, so?
Yes, there is. The, the, the nearly $3 billion budget for CAL FIRE is the largest ever proposed and part of that is, is more vegetation management funding through their, their grants program. Additionally, the bond would also fill CAL FIRE's coffers with, 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 with funding for, for their, for their grant programs.
Yeah.
Is CAL FIRE part of Armando's operation?
They are. They are under the, the Secretary or the, 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 the State Secretary of the Interior. I'm not sure how much latitude Armando's department has over, over that. There is, there is some competition for that forest health funding between the Secretary of Natural Resources and the, the CAL FIRE operation itself.
Thanks.
So at the, at the federal level, the focus has been to track bills that promote funding for ratepayer relief for infrastructure funding and particularly to monitor bills which make special districts eligible for direct payments of federal dollars. Our focus has most recently been on stimulus funding. However, the Association of Metropolitan Water Agencies informed us this week that the Drinking Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Act, Senate Bill 914, has passed through committee and is moving towards consideration by the full Senate. That legislation would reauthorize a number of existing water and wastewater infrastructure programs such as WIFIA or create several, several new ones. In terms of stimulus funding, the, the $1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan Act provides direct stimulus payments to most Americans and it also contains $350 billion in payments to state and local governments. Aqua, CMUA, and AMWA are actively working to ensure that some of that funding is made available to water agencies for infrastructure. It was announced this week that the County Marin will receive $50.2 million directly. That's coming in two tranches, one in early May and the other a couple months later. Pending US Treasury guidelines will confirm the existing or the authorized uses, including COVID response, infrastructure, and the extent of any revenue backfill, Marin cities and town, revenue backfill. Marin cities and towns are estimated to receive an additional $36 million. These direct allocations have a spending deadline of December 31st, 2024. One recurring issue, as, as Director Kohler pointed out, is that at the federal level, as a special district, Marin Water is not eligible for direct funding allocations. House Resolution 7073, introduced by Congressman John Garamendi, has been an attempt to make special districts eligible for direct payments. However, the bill has not passed. And as a passage of the CARES and American Rescue Acts, special districts must still seek this funding through partnerships with cities or counties.
Are we making, Matt? Are we making any effort to warm up our partnership relationships with the cities that real, that are in our district?
Yes. Crystal has been working directly with, with, with the county and we're, we're meeting with them in a few weeks on this issue.
So you, you think the county is sufficient? We don't need to worry about the cities to, to develop that relationship?
I think it depends on the project, but given that they're receiving $36 million, it certainly wouldn't hurt to, to, to discuss any projects with them.
Of, of course, of course. I'm just thinking, Cynthia, that it might make sense for us to propose some kind of a joint effort between us and the cities to do water conservation. That's what I'm thinking. Something like that.
I agree. I, I don't see, I mean, I think it's great that Garamendi is doing this. I don't see it going anywhere soon unless they're able to attach it to the infrastructure bill. They're not moving any standalone bills like this. I mean, Matt, you may have a different understanding, but that's mine.
I think that's correct.
To Chair Russell's comment about working with the cities, I've worked, I've reached out to Fairfax and San Anselmo to do exactly that. And we're trying to get MMWD looped in to kind of do an inventory in each of those jurisdictions, you know, to see what, how they're irrigating, where they're irrigating and, you know, to work with them, you know, to conserve water and, and save money. So, you know, I see that as being very helpful as far as not only saving water, but these relationships that you're referring to, you know, I think it's, it's really important to, to get them on board, you know, with conservation and, and everything else, so.
Yeah, that's a great comment, Larry. And to that extent, I did a little survey i- in my district, which includes the General Office Building for the Water District. We need to get these signs around and out. I didn't see any. I mean, if, if you want the directors to do it, we can do it. But it seems to me it'd be much easier to have a water district person approach people like the gas station on the corner by the left bank. There's a gas station that has a big sweeping corner by the tennis club across the street. They're, they're real easy about putting signs up on their grass in the corner. We should probably get, tell them to get rid of the grass, but there's, I have a strip there and we, we need to get these signs out and about. I've got some up. I thank you very much, Terry, for delivering them to me. I've got a few of them up. But, you know, we need a, we need a whole lot more, in my opinion.
Larry, if, if, if you reach out to your towns, your town manager, I've done that for Ross, Fairfax, San Anselmo.
Yep.
You know, I dropped off a bunch of them at, at town halls and just asked them to kind of put them out in their, you know, in their public areas. And they were quite, you know, quite cooperative, really, you know, so that's just a way of kind of delegating it a little bit. But those guys are out there in the field all the time, so.
Oh, no, it's a great idea, Larry. Are you seeing them up, the signs?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're getting up, you know, not, not too many, but you know, they're, they're good signs and, you know, they definitely, you know, that blue really stands out, so.
Very readable. Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
So just in summary, we will continue to pursue grants in support of district initiatives. We're tracking the state and federal legislation and funding measures and staff seeks to bring, to bring selected bills to the board for position adoption. Thank you.
So on, on the last item specifically, from what I heard, the board seems to be interested for us to bring back analysis on SB 323 and then whatever comes out of the wildfire bills in the state for potential district positions. Is that a correct assessment?
Yes, I think that's accurate.
Yeah, and good work, Matt. Some big comments coming in.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Good job. And, and nice summary too. Matt, have you seen the document that Sonoma Water puts out on this subject? They, they have a shiny brochure that has a whole section on the grants they've received.
I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, it's, it's a beautiful thing. It, it must have cost them, you know, six figures, easy. It's full color, eight and a half by 11, 20 pages long, and it talks about the district, but it has a whole section on grants.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Any more questions? Any questions from the public?
Earlier, I saw Mr. Roberts' hand up. Let me see if he has anything for this item.
Yeah, you got to watch his hand, you know, it's, he doesn't quite have control of it, so.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
Anything? Good.
Yes, yes. There's an opportunity in a number of areas particularly associated with legislation, which is difficult to follow because bills change by the hour sometimes. But Marin Conservation League is moving towards a more participation, if you will, in following and, and supporting legislation that we believe is useful for protecting the natural resources and of the county. And so the more that we can be in communication with you on these issues, the better we can help support this with, you know, our own positions and making them known to legislators. So I think there's an opportunity for us to work together from time to time and I would like to ensure that that happens.
Great comment, Roger.
I have no further comments.
Okay, with that, I think we're done. Thank you all very much.
Okay, we're done.
See you next time.
Thanks a lot.
Rain dance, rain dance, rain dance. Don't forget. See y'all.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.